Welcome everybody to the OHSA Mineral Council. July, or June twenty-sixth, June twenty-sixth. Uh, no twenty-fifth.
Let me see, I'm actually at twenty-fifth.
Uh, June, delayed meeting was postponed on the eighteenth. And I got a few announcements. Uh, Nicole approached me earlier before the meeting and uh, she's kind of reminding everybody about the uh, tour of the Cog Catch Point, the cells up north of Burbank Field. And she would like to have a, whoever's going to go, whoever's going to pick her, like to know, sign up with, sign up the list.
When?
Also, uh, I asked the superintendent that Mr. Goss could be here in the meeting. He's environmental specialist with the Bureau of Energy Affairs. And if you have any questions concerning environmental issues, he's the man for you.
For the United States Government, Jerem.
Also, uh, I invited Mr. Kohler, but he, Mr. Kohler probably could later. But also, please, 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 keep your comments to five minutes. And try to get out of here quick. As our custom and uh, tradition and culture, Nick, about that fellow.
I want to come.
The CISO said.
What kind of, what kind of, you would acknowledge?
Twenty-five, part two-two-six was enforced. The categorical exclusion was enforced. We were approving three to four hundred leases a year. Quite busy in this room. And basically, all we were doing was pulling gas, leasing, making sure, you know, we have the best people in here. Since that time, these environmental things have walked through the door. And I don't know how, but just one by one, they get expanded, completed, and it's devastating to our development. I can't stress that enough. Since I've been on since, a few times here and there, it's gone way down. You know, look at this one right here, the approved permits is almost nothing compared to two thousand six, two thousand ten. We have a lot of production. Ninety-six, I'm even hearing ninety-eight percent of our check, uh, we hand to our shareholders. Our front, oil and gas primary development. Of course, the, the work that's going on out there, the carbon enhancement recovery project, carbon dioxide. I also read that EPA is going to kill the, uh, our deal, Department of Energy is going to kill the three point seven billion dollars in car decarbonization projects, which I think is music to the Osage's ear. So I think this administration, as far as I'm concerned, you guys, the bosses in DC, are serious about drilling. And I'm wondering, can we take that same vein down back to where we are in a local level and get it going? That would be my desire when I talk to you, sir, and you, sir, is let's get back to drilling. Let's get back, that's what I told DC, that's why. These folks that came up from the city with Mr. Rebar, Mr. Red Eagle, I said, let's get back to business. Back to two thousand six, two thousand ten, when we were approved three to four hundred leases a year. So I could pull up, we, we, we did so much, we went back to the auction. You see our lease approvals on our engines, they disappeared. Why? Because we just went straight back to the auction. We decided as a council, we also decided as a council to increase royalties. You know, does that fit today? I don't know. We need to talk as mineral council. But we're in a different game today with these numbers right here. It's, you know, especially if this president comes in and says, I drill, make a drill. I want to do it. I think we can do it. So, you know, whatever barriers we got in place, we need to get them out of the way. You know, if you, if we're really here for our shareholders, they're sitting on a billion dollar asset and they're struggling. Struggling to pay their bills. So I'm saying, let's open this thing up, get it back to business, because we got a lot of Osages that are, you know, that are on top of it. That's her, that's her income. So, you know, I'm sorry, but that's the way the Osages did things back history long. We took care of them. So that's what I'm asking, if we can, you know, that's what I'm going to be watching. Is that categorical exclusion slide that these people from DC came in will come and hit us here? I'd love to see it. Get us back to two thousand six, two thousand ten. Get these regulations off the table. I told them in DC, I told Scott Davis, I told, I said, it worked back then, why isn't it working now? You know, I said, we got a lot of people with a pen and a lawyer or whatever, create laws and processes to kill our production. That's what I'm saying. You know, I'm just, I said, I'm just a local native. I don't know, I'm just seeing what I'm telling what I saw. We gotta get back to business. Thank you, Mr. Doss, you got it, remember that?
Thank you, Councilman, uh, and I agree with you that maybe your production might on, and I think we're on track to that with this administration. Um, I know that historically, we had a lot more production. And the twenty-fourteen lawsuit where the, we had now enforced NEPA after that. And so NEPA had been around since nineteen sixty-nine. It hadn't been in, hadn't been enforced, it hadn't been implemented here in OSH County. Uh, it was an issue one law, but it wasn't happening here. So that allowed a lot more production to happen, uh, which is great. Uh, but when it started being forced, uh, as it had been in other places since nineteen sixty-nine, it choked down production here. Some of that had to do with administrations that have been in the past that haven't been as well friendly. But now with the current administration, it seems like they're really serious about the CE's and the extra of the NEPA. And, um, like a lot of things that happened, they have good intentions and they roll things out. But sometimes they're unfamiliar and they'll put, this is what we're going to do without implementation guidance or without having thought about, well, how does that work in any country? And so right now, they're trying to figure out, how can we take this intent to loosen those up and unleash the production? How can we do that without infringing on the law? But they're also going to do it to where everybody is at the table and everybody's making money and production is up, how we want it to be. And so I think they're on track for that, it's just matter of figuring it out.
So, and I'm sorry, follow-up. I'm sorry, sir. I'm hearing, I go to DC.
Yes, sir.
I'm hearing a little different comments than what I'm hearing right here.
Sure.
They're like, what do we need to do to get all this off the table?
Oh, no, I agree. I'm with you on that. And I think that's what they're working towards, is, is, they set a sure how to do that.
We're telling them, get it off the table. I'm wondering if the people that are in the lower echelons are saying the same thing going to DC and tell them? Because they're probably getting on the phone and saying, what's going on in the field in OSH County?
Sure.
And are they getting the same comments flowing back?
They are. I can answer, yes, they are. The, um, they had solicited comments to us informally, I think, uh, a number of months ago, so we had given them comments to say, for instance, that Bureau of Land Management has a CE that they use for public land, trust lands. We communicated that upward, and then they did a formal data call, which, uh, the superintendent spoke to.
I'll, I'll tell you my thoughts. When I read what new administration is coming in, I, I was thinking, oh, boy, I can take that EIS, drop it right on the floor. I would have fallen. That's what he said. NEPA was out. And that's what I'd like to see.
Yep.
NEPA out. And that's what he said. I'm hoping that comes flowing down this. I'm just sitting here hoping so I can get back to business, we can get our oil production up.
I understand, yes, sir.
That's my thinking, but thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thanks, Chairman.
That's a reword.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Following Captain Redcorn's comment, uh, the what, about, about drilling and how it used to be active and now it's stagnant, discretion hold, actually. Zero permits to drill wells, zero completions of wells drilled. So when we went to Washington, every opportunity we got, we, starting with Mr. Scott Davis, we explained to them a couple of the primary reasons why we think it's so slow here. Uh, and that is the lack of access to our well records. Somebody from outside wanting to put together, generate a drilling and exploration program doesn't have access to the wa, the well records to do so. And also, the, uh, the CFRs. The, uh, the two-two-six, CFRs are sitting on, according to Washington, they're sitting on a desk, just not implemented. So, and we were kind of encouraged that it didn't sound like they were going to be. But the fact that they are out there and they've not been eradicated is still harmful to us because it's like a black cloud still over our mineral state, a shadow that somebody might want to buy some production here or hesitant to do so, not knowing if these things are going to be revised to include the ones that are, that we are fearful are coming. Uh, or somebody new from outside, they're considering spending some capital here. Uh, they need to know what is, what, what's going to be the rules and regulations when you come. And right now, it's this, this is my worn-out copy, thirty years ago, but, uh, but the, this may not be their rules and regulations. I was trying to get in here and drill their first well. Might be this new set that would be horrific. So those are two things that if we can expedite that, get these things eradicated. I just wanted, so that you could, you could reiterate it, maybe say, I keep hearing this. I keep hearing them want the well records, I keep hearing them want to stick with the regulations we've got, tell another set that's mutually agreeable, can be drafted, that'd be nice. And then, uh, your comment about this Tracy, was it Tracy Williams?
Williamson.
Wilkinson?
Williamson.
Williamson. And, uh, would she be acting in the capacity of our regional director?
Correct.
Did our regional director resign or retire?
He's currently on leave.
He's on leave? Will he be coming back, or do you know?
I'm not sure the, the exact answer, but I'm just told that we have an active regional director for the immediate future.
Okay, because I remember in all the other tribes, I, I remember, uh, the chief telling me, because he was sitting next to me, saying that Mr. Cretor had an opportunity to retire and had to make some kind of decision within, I think he said forty-five days.
Right.
But, uh, so I just was wondering, did he retire? So maybe he did. Uh, the last question, thank you, Chairman, is, have you received any applications for a Class VI well recently?
Uh, it wouldn't come to us, but I have not received any, or have I received notice of any of these?
Well, the EPA is the one currently asking the issues and permits for the, for the Class VI well. But wouldn't, wouldn't they also have a one-thirty-nine form for a Class VI well?
Uh, they would be the one to issue the permit, but there would be consultations to be part of that.
So they wouldn't go through the normal process to fill out the intent to drill for one-thirty-nine?
Uh, it's not a situation we've come across in the past, uh, on the injector wells, that's how we would typically do it for the other ones. So they would still go through us, but the, for the actual Class VI, to get authorization to do the injection, that would be through EPA.
I understand that, the authorization to inject it, and I know that they would have to have a Class VI permit. But I would still think that they'd be responsible and required to fill out a one-thirty-nine form and intent to drill, to drill the well.
Correct, to drill the well. Yeah, I mean.
And you, and so my question is, have you received one of those intent to drills?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Chairman.
Neil, do you have a question for, for Superintendent, Mr. Doss?
Uh, I, I think you guys covered it. My main question I have every day when I come to work is, can we get a categorical exclusion like we had in nineteen seventy-nine up until, what, about twenty-fourteen? So that's the whole deal. If you can drop NEPA, drop FOIA, drop the endangered species act. Our last million-dollar lease sale was one point seven billion dollars in two thousand eleven in Tulsa. And it's been down to hell ever since. Ninety-eight percent decline in permits, licenses, and work developers.
Thank you, Neil. Uh, go ahead, Superintendent.
What are you going to respond? Uh, in order to get away from NEPA, take an act of Congress, um, and it's just federal law. As long as it maintains a federal trust asset, it's gonna, we're gonna have to deal with NEPA. Um, there may be ways to get a CE, but that's gonna have to come from the top down. Um, so your comment is, what, what we can do to increase drilling? Uh, I met with operators and, uh, it was my intent to have the first ones under that alternate process done here. I had met with a few of them. We've got four drilling permits in process right now. We've, uh, planned to have them all done through the alternate NEPA process. Um, I had given all of the operators my assurances that we would jettison all of our resources to do it. Now I've got egg on my face because I'm being told from the top down that we can't do it and that they have now carved out any type of.
Who's telling you you can't do it?
Uh, that was from the Deputy Secretary. And that until the consultation period's done, we can't utilize that alternate NEPA process. So on a personal level, I do, you know, I am committed to getting these things done. It's, uh, with one hand, they gave it, and with another hand, they took it away. The second we get authorized, authorization to move that through, um, we will jettison all of our resources to move those permits as quickly as we can. Uh, the last point I was going to mention is that, um, it's come to my attention too, production history for OSH County is available through the OSH Tax Commission too, on each lease. Um, we're kind of, our hands are tied with some of the stuff we can release through FOIA. But to any operators who want the production on the joint leases, that would be another avenue, they'd be able to do it in Oklahoma operates under just the laws. And it's all readily available, uh, publicly accessible through a chart.
And where did you say it was?
The Oklahoma Tax Commission.
Oh, okay.
For the, where is production, for the taxes?
Thank you, Superintendent, I appreciate it. Go ahead, last, last one, last one. Okay, uh, a couple of months ago, I asked this question. And then I'm going to ask again. On our quarterly report, show production payout. The top of it says, OSH's tribal revenues. I understand that report still, we're still garnering it, is that correct? This is Lacy, so that report's sent to us. This is the trustee. Who is that? I think it's the OSH headright holders.
The beneficiary or the trustee?
The trustee.
Well, the trustee would be the federal government. The beneficiary.
Beneficiary is the?
The headright holders.
Okay, so all revenues garnered from this trust belongs to the headright holders. Everything, on top, everywhere, on bottom, belongs to the shareholders. OSH should, by the way. Well, thank you, sir. I just thought. Thank you, Superintendent, Mr. Doss, thank you.
I had one other thing I was going to bring your attention, but, uh, on our easements for any assignment, the current easement language requires a authorization or concurrence from the Mineral Council. We had a few of the assignments of easements come through. I'll have Kami forward those to you guys. But we would need you guys to approve those before we can approve them, just under the current terms of those easements.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Doss, thank you. Thank you. Next on agenda, uh, VTFI, Rural Trust Administration, Stephanie Davis. Have a seat, Stephanie, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, there.
Um, Troyce is unavailable today. Our fiduciary trust officer, so she asked me to be here in her place. I'm Stephanie Davis, the trust and, trust accounts administrator. Um, our, I just wanted to let you know that our June payment went off without hitch, as everybody is probably aware of now. Um, so that's good news. Um, we're currently in the midst of our annual tribal account reviews, which, um, we've received most of the response from your offices. Um, so that's right on schedule. The end of that is July thirty-first is when those are due tomorrow at our commitment. So we're right on schedule for that. Um, and we wanted to provide, Troyce asked me to provide our government furnished cell phone numbers to you all since we've been having some trouble with our landlines going down frequently. So, uh, Troyce Gueranger, her direct cell phone number is nine-one-eight-eight-eight-three-one-zero-zero-six. And mine, Stephanie Davis, is nine-one-eight-eight-eight-six-one-three-two-nine. And we have, yes, nine-one-eight-eight-eight-six-one-three-two-nine is mine. Did you get Troyce's? And, um, that's really all I have.
That's a reword.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to know what percentage of the annuities receive their, their quarterly payments electronically versus US mail?
I mean, that's something I'll have to report next time.
Off the top of your head, would you, would you think that it might be split pretty evenly or, or heavily one way or the other?
So probably, um, we have probably an even amount. I, I mean, off the top of my head, um, I still have quite a few builders that want to receive a paper check.
And so I'm sure that especially the ones that get their by mail, when they have a change of address or, uh, maybe there's a change in ownership of the headright going to an air or something.
Yes.
And, and you, you receive that information. Do you share the change of addresses with the superintendent's office?
Uh, no.
How, how would the superintendent know when they give us a list for our roles for our elections? How would they know, uh, to change their address on their list?
So they see the same system. They, they have access to our system, superintendent's office.
So when you change it, it's the same system that they draw it off of?
Um, the address feeds into their system, but I'm not exactly sure if, um, it changes their system.
Is it something that kind of flags in?
When they enter new airs, it feeds into our system.
What about change of address, somebody moving?
Yeah, um, I believe it, I, I don't want to speculate, so I would have to answer that.
If the next time you or Troyce, uh, you know, come meet with us, would you, uh, maybe update us on what you might have learned?
Yeah, well, I know the report that they, um, get for election is derived from a reporting that comes from our system. So it's live.
I'm just trying to figure, is there a way that something could slip through the cracks? Because we have lots and lots of shareholders with bad addresses. I've witnessed it, uh, two elections that I've been involved with, and I just hope, try to give a handle on it and prove it every year. So that's my, why I'm concerned. Thank you, though.
And sometimes it has to do with the file that they pull from their system. Um, they have a residential address and they also have a financial address. And I believe our system only changes one, and so one is.
The people that are receiving it electronically, they may not think, oh, I need to let them know that we moved two years ago.
Well, and if they have electronic payments, even if a bad address hap, occurs, like if we get a return statement, we freeze that money. It does not go, continue to go out. If the correspondence comes back, even though they have direct deposit, we freeze the money, so they still have to call us in order to receive their.
All right, I, I.
That's what I agree with, that's what I want. Just in fact, that on that address on the listing itself, the only changes that will occur is the ones to probate. Everything else goes through their system. Secondary is, fail-safe is exactly that. I think it's a great question, though, about electronic. But it doesn't matter until their office gets it adjusted. I'm with you. It's going to catch up sooner or later, but the other is that while he's asking the percentage of how many go electronic, how many does that? I'd like to have the number that the guys next door is all receiving. On how many Osages, how many headrides? Because I've had that brought to me and I don't, I don't, we never got the numbers. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. That's what I want to hear.
I need to ask you something. You just brought a question in my mind. Your, uh, payment is actually the money, whether they get it in the bank or by check, uh, electronically transferred or however you get it to. But that quarterly report, don't they have to have a current address? Is that address, is that information the same as what's on the, what they get paid?
Are you talking about the, when you say quarterly?
Yeah, I get a quarterly report.
Statement that goes out?
I'm, you know, more interested in the statement.
Yes.
Your list of addresses and statements, because that will go to them personally. It wouldn't go to the bank, would it?
No, it does not go to the bank. It goes to their mailing address.
Okay, so that mailing address is different than the address that, that they would use for the election because it's not part of the quarterly payment address. I mean.
No, they, they pull, they don't pull the electronic information, like the banking information. They wouldn't pull that.
Yeah, but when you get on that list, it says Joe Blow, whatever, yada, 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 some, some friend. You, it's the list of this office up here.
Okay, I'm, I'm not aware of what the list says.
So I'm saying, the list that you have out, you have, that builds up the quarterly reports is probably a more accurate list of how to get to people than the list that they get for your payment. That's all I'm saying.
I don't know what, what, what you mean by there would be a different list.
Because you wouldn't send the, uh, quarterly report to the bank.
Right.
Now, Stephanie, the, the, the one that knows, you know, Karen, uh, knows, you know?
Yes.
Did y'all have any cuts in your?
Yes, substantial.
Anybody here?
Yes, uh, TR Scallion, she took the DR, yes.
So it's just Troyce that you use over there now?
Uh, no, there's actually four of us, uh, Troyce, me, um, Kimberly Binlow, and Paula Reese.
Oh, Kimberly, Kimberly. Anybody else? Thank you, Stephanie, appreciate it.
You're welcome. You guys have a good week. Enjoyed my house, though.
Way to go, now. Anybody here from the treasurer? OSH Nation Treasurer? Let's see, anybody, uh, people go on to the new business, A D L, even opposed. Ken, come on up.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'm not, I'm not Kimberly, that I am Wade Miller. I am with American Environmental, like Phil. And, uh, first of all, we've been here a couple of times over the years. Uh, we'll be back this morning and want to, first of all, congratulate y'all on getting the privacy transfer over from CDQ to EPA. I know y'all worked very hard on that. And then for that, I would congratulate you on that as well. But what we're here this morning for is we're seeking your approval to commence with an easement agreement with BIA for Class One injection well there in American Environmental. That Class One well will be utilized to dispose of our leachate that we generate as well as other, uh, has, industrial liquids that is accepted at the landfill as well. Uh, the UIC well would be permitted with the EPA. It would also be located there on the landfill permit. And what you have in front of you there is a proposed royalty to develop that easement. And what we're proposing at this point in time, based on, uh, what we believe in the area, a maximum of five thousand barrels per day injection volume capacity. We're proposing a forty cents per barrel royalty. At the beginning, once we have an easement agreed upon inside and executed, we would then pay you a, excuse me, a twenty-five thousand dollar initial fee or initial payment to you until we inject, begin injection of the fluids into that area. Once we begin injection, our minimum rule to pay will be eighty thousand dollars a year. That space one of two hundred thousand barrels. Once we exceed two hundred thousand barrels for that year, we'll then pay you forty cents a barrel or anything above that. But at a minimum, we'll pay eighty thousand dollars a year for that core space. Based upon our five thousand barrels a year or five thousand barrels a day, excuse me?
Yeah, don't say that.
The maximum capacity we could inject at is roughly one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand barrels, which would make the maximum payment to you equal to seven hundred thirty thousand dollars a year. So again, we're here this morning to seek your approval to move forward with the BIA, uh, easement agreement for this UIC Class One well.
That's a reword.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for being here. And I remember you all came some time ago and we were arguing over, the state, the Department of Environmental Quality was trying to take over the authority over the class, the Class One wells. We only have one Class One well, and that's over at the Department. Uh, so this will be a commercial well, right? In addition to your leach, I guess is what you call it, leachate?
Yes, sir.
That, the fluid that you've got in ponds over there, uh, if I remember correctly, what you're doing with it now is somehow you're making it into a solid.
Yes, sir. Well, now, the leachate that we generate on site is roughly around two hundred thousand a year that we generate. Uh, and that's just the groundwater, the percolation, the trash that's collected, the landfill that we have to manage as what's water. Uh, so that's around two hundred thousand barrels. The other, uh, liquids that we do tank is non-hazardous, because we tank that into a solidification area. So we do, so we bulk them with CKD dust, fly ash, malt, other, other materials to, to bulk and solidify and basic capacity tank filter test before we can put it back in the watering phase. With this well, we would essentially remove that bulking phase for the majority of those liquids. We'll still have probably some of those liquids that have soft, high solids content that we're going to have to continue to supply. But we're hoping for the majority of those liquids to be able to be put into the UIC well.
How many barrels a day from your operation? Because I understand this will be a, you're asking for, uh, you're going to apply for a permit unlike the new chair, which is just for their plant. Uh, you're going to be requesting a permit from the EPA to, to be a commercial well. Another one, uh, industrial weight for, or not hazardous. in other words, uh, industrial waste or, or non-hazardous liquids. What percentage, how many barrels a day from your operation would go into this well, do you know?
Uh, right now, we're probably with our incoming, uh, waste streams that we have, or sixteen leachate that we have, we're probably somewhere between four hundred and five hundred thousand per year, is what we're asking. So, what we're looking.
Couple hundred barrels a day.
Yeah, we're probably.
And then the minimum, I count, I ran the numbers on the two hundred thousand, that's approximately five hundred barrels of that. And that's minimum, and it's not like a take or pay, I understand, or I'm thinking that regardless of whether or not you, you put that fluid in there or not, you're still gonna pay a leave of five hundred barrels a day.
Yes.
At forty cents, once you get your, start your injecting.
Yes.
And so, you're gonna pay twenty-five thousand a year, uh, until you get the authorization to inject it from EPA. At that point, it goes to eighty thousand minimum, and it could go up as high as seven hundred thousand, uh, if it was your whole permitted amount you got from all these outside sources.
Yes, sir.
Then finally, Chairman, uh, the, uh, your EPA permit, does it, is, does it renew at some period of time? Over ten years, permanent renewal? And then, and then what is the criteria for that renewal? That you are in compliance, as long as you didn't have any issues, they just renew it, or?
We'll have to work that out with EPA, but generally, it's a full permit resubmission essentially.
Are you, are you proposing that maybe at the end of that ten year, we could renegotiate this, a different, a different amount? I would think because of the cost of living and everything else, we might want to, uh, re-evaluate the compensation. And could we maybe, uh, write it up in such a way that we would, uh, reevaluate, renegotiate this arrangement at the same anniversary of your ten-year period meeting?
Okay, that makes complete sense to me, we can get a total agreement of that.
Okay, that's all I have, Chairman.
That's record.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate you coming in, uh, thank you for your comments on about the, uh, EPA recognizance, our privacy here, uh, it's been, I was glad to hear, I'm receiving a hurt, so, uh, appreciate that. Uh, just a comment here, you know, our biggest income is oil, but this one's kinda coming in with the gas. So, appreciate that, I mean, I'd like to talk more, but it's coming in close second, so, that's all I have to say, I appreciate you thinking about it.
Councilman Waller.
Yes, sir, federal law allows to do a ten-year, so I think with the council, we should be advised following the same format we do with New Sarah, and just plug in these numbers with it, because that's already been approved, and then you'll be under more of a leasing requirement. And I would say that, I, I think theirs was five or six years, whatever they allow to the federal government, I think that's what I would ask you, Chairman, to follow that, because, uh, the next question I have, you're not gonna do this, inject under pressure, are you?
No, we believe at this point, primarily be under gravity, I mean, we'll have further research to determine exactly whatever things will be required, but this is what we believe.
There'll be requirements of this leash, you're on the sign that you gotta come see us for any of that, to, if anything changes in the requirements.
We've done preliminary reviews of surrounding areas, there's gotten really a lot there close to us, so it's hard to really go, what the geology has been, but based upon the limited research we've done, we believe, uh, be prepared in the back of our being.
Thank you, Chairman, sir, I entertain the motion. Motion on the floor to accept this, this proposal, need a second. Second, uh, second Chair, any, any discussion?
I'd like.
Councilman, Councilman Waller.
It says here that, uh, you will not put non-hazardous off-site liquids, the injection fluids, do you have a list of what you won't allow, do you put in there?
Do we have a list, will we allow, I mean, you typically, I mean, it's based upon EPA regulations, but they consider it non-hazardous, they have a criteria that they have, of course, you have flammability, you have pH restrictions, you have toxicity restrictions, and so forth, and so, each, I mean, talk rate here is, class present land operations is a special way to be ready.
If you have a list, you surely would have a list there if somebody calls us and says, oh, two dicks.
It's really different than talking.
There would be, yes ma'am, a list of potential chemicals that would be submitted with our application, and it would all include all non-hazardous waste liquids. And by that, as he indicated, it would be non-toxic, non-reactive, and certainly couldn't be caustic or acidic, and certainly couldn't be flammable. So, those are the criteria, as he mentioned, but we would be able to provide a list of those liquids, typical liquids that we must.
That's gonna be attached to the lease?
The permit application.
Permit with the EPA, or with?
That's correct, with the EPA.
Okay.
In other words, you would never get the permit without the condition.
Can I get a copy of the list?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I need.
We'll have to get you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion on the floor, any more discussion? They, they're gonna go for this, or, 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 or.
Can you read the, the, uh, what, the version on the resolution? We're actually writing it here, sir.
Discussion again, the, uh, if I remember right, the new chair, like Chairman Waller said, look, they, theirs renewed every, every five years, and I can't remember what happened on the last one, if they extended it or not, I do know, from being on the council now, seven years, they've come to us twice for the renewal, so I think it is every five years.
Yes, sir, and we actually caught up to that.
Yeah.
I'm in good shape, Chairman, for a second. Resolution.
Right now, I have an easement to AEL for UIC Class One Injection Well, returns is clear, royalty at forty percent, forty cents for each barrel of fluid it disposes, um, into the well, with a guaranteed minimum royalty of eighty thousand, equivalent to two hundred thousand barrels. Annual minimum royalty payment will be considered a free payment of two hundred thousand barrels of what disposed, and then the twelve months after the payment is made, after the disposal of two hundred thousand barrels of fluid, the payment always is for barrel to be paid on the first day of each month, until the next annual minimum royalty payment is made, and then I have a little note to check on New Sarah's timeframe too.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Open the vote.
Sheriff Bob here.
I believe so, sir.
Could I interject one thing, uh, with respect to the comments about renegotiation, AEL would have no problem whatsoever under two conditions, and that would be, one, you could actually place in a negotiated increase at five years, if that's what the council would like. The other would be that we could, uh, you know, have a, uh, percentage allocated for that, but certainly, in no way whatsoever is AEL, uh, trying to get any sort of long-term no negotiation.
We wouldn't let you.
We recognize the cost of.
No, open the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Redigle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shofford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
Uh, next on the, do you have the executive session, uh, entertain a motion, go on to executive session. Summon. Second, Secretary of Commerce, Councilman Waller. Any discussion? Open the vote.
Second Chair, Tishawala? Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Redigle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shofford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ten minute prayer.
I would've just said, Lacy, please, the attachment.
Uh, Dayton is either going to go get lunch right now, or he's already gone, I don't know.